Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Library Trustees meeting Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 at 6:47 PM. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
I call for a motion to accept the minutes.
I made a motion to.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, who is here? Okay, Karen?
Yep. So, I will go over some of the statistics because it was the end of the fiscal year. So, to wrap up FY '23, we had over 45,000 print checkouts, 15,000, almost 15,500 digital checkouts, 544 new patrons, and close to 30,000 visits. Those numbers are, they're all up except new patrons was roughly about the same as the previous fiscal year, but of course it is hard with COVID still lingering.
Interesting.
But yeah, but the other numbers were all increases.
Excellent.
Financial, so we did have a transfer was approved for 17,000 from Exo Salary Funds to cover expenses deficit, which was mostly the HVAC repairs and maintenance that we had done. Programming, so during FY '23, we had 368 programs, a total attendance of over 6,000. And then we had 43, the kit and take and make projects or activities, participation over 1,000. So, I think those are great numbers.
Yeah.
So far in July, we're very pleased with how summer reading programs have been going. We've gotten, you know, good participation across the board for different programs. And then we'll talk a little bit probably on the foundation, but trivia night by all accounts was a success. Coming up in August, you should have a calendar, we're obviously continuing a lot of the programs from July, but we also have an Eastern Children's Museum, Hanson Cultural Council program, they're funding Finding Your Voice Through Steam. And then Julie Stupanik, who she's been here before, we're doing ukulele programs. You may remember her, she's doing another one, Finding Your Voice With Music. And then we have Back to School at the end of August, local author, she has a book that we've had here before for kids who are anxious about school. So, our summer reading finale is going to be August 11th. We're still trying to finalize some things, but we're hoping to hold it at Heidi's. And then if we can hold it there, we'll be giving out the coupons and they can get a free ice cream all there. And then we're trying to set up, we were originally going to try to have Bluey for the open house, but then we switched to Mario. So, we're thinking of trying to have Bluey come for the summer reading finale. So, we're seeing.
Do they have a little room up on the, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Do they have a little room now over there at Heidi's?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll see, but obviously with the weather too, if it's, yeah.
They have like.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Do you have an estimate of how many participants for summer reading because the foundation will be purchasing?
Yeah, Julie hadn't counted the numbers yet, but I can get that to you. I'll have her do that.
Okay. And you'll have a list to check them off if it's at Heidi's?
Yes, yeah.
Will you mail?
Yeah, well, yeah, if somebody doesn't come, we'll send the others out. And then we're going to do the raffle prizes will be drawn that day as well. Building and maintenance, so Charlie was looking into, speaking of sprinklers, we were talking about before, the backflow device in sprinkler system has failed inspection. So, he actually just earlier today sent me the estimate. And I actually happened to be meeting with Lisa at the time, and it's $4,155. So, I asked Lisa, you know, she said, do you have enough money to cover this? Not really, obviously our budget, our building line is only 15,000. She said, you know, put it in though, and then if by the end of fiscal year, if you need more, we'll have to deal with things then, you know, do a transfer. So, if you could approve the cost of the emergency repair for the, it's a sprinkler backflow, it's $4,155.
For the fire sprinklers?
Yes.
Did the fire department fail it?
It was either fire or water, I think water.
Okay, water department.
Yeah. And actually, we had, probably a few weeks ago, the fire alarm went off, like unexpectedly, it just in the middle of the day just went off. And they found out that there was a pressure issue and that's believed it was related to this, that the pressure wasn't being regulated properly, that this device was failing.
Okay, that was the day I saw a fire truck out here in the middle of the lot.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the $4100 to fix the sprinkler backflow.
The device.
Second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. And then just a couple of other notes too. Percy, he's been, you know, doing very well so far. He's already reached out to some potential contacts that he has to do some events, he's planning his own events, begun, you know, ordering some new materials, he's going to be working on book display, actually, I think you already put it up for, with your donation, the books that we.
Oh, I did see it.
So, yeah, you take a look when you go in. And he's, you know, been really good with helping patrons and.
So, the bookplates were printed?
Yes. There's one, I think I had to adjust a little bit because the book was, it was a toddler book and it wouldn't fit, so I just, like a little.
Right, yeah.
You know? And then I'm working on the ARX report, it's due August 16th, I should be finishing that up in a week or two, so.
Under your report, you mentioned programming in more than one place. We discussed programming last month a little bit. You did have the educational program workshop, and I'd like to follow up a little on that, I think. I think until we have a programming policy, it might be wise not to get programmers in, people presenting programs whose main responsibility is to sell a product. I think it's too much potential for hidden bias in the presentation. And since the last meeting, I did look, and it's not unusual for libraries to have these programs and say not sponsored by the library. I don't know if you want to look into it, you know, with your contacts.
Yeah, well, I have a list, programming policies on my list to tackle in the near future.
How do people feel?
But right now, we don't have any scheduled that I think would fit.
How do people feel about holding off on that?
When you think about it, we have author talks, they're selling their books, do you not want to do that?
I think it's, their primary purpose is not a salesperson. Like a salesperson, if they're selling even like educational investments, someone could present about maybe an annuity versus a CD. And I'm no expert on annuities, so I don't get into them. I don't buy anything I don't understand. But I have heard annuities have a big front end load that a salesperson gets a big commission on. There's a place firm in certain people's portfolios.
Right.
But they, I don't know if someone coming in would present all the full story. There could be high fees if you pull them out early. They could be, they could be callable, you know, if rates went down, the person could have to reinvest the money at a lower rate, the annuity could be no good anymore. I think like someone like this might be a broker versus a fiduciary, where a fiduciary, if you work with that kind of person, they have to have your best interests in mind. But we can't, and I don't think the library should take on the responsibility of looking into all of this.
Well, right now, we've kind of already mapped out most of our fall programming, and we don't have any programs that would qualify into that. And that was one.
So, we'll probably have.
Yeah, so, and I'm hoping to have a policy like probably like early next year at the latest, so.
So, do you feel comfortable trustees and Karen holding off on having people that are salespeople come in?
Yeah, but we really have only had one.
Yeah, we've only had like two or three, I think, over the last five years.
I think we agreed at the last meeting that the goal is education, not selling. But even education, person can come in and present information and be biased, you know, some might be trying, again, like whole term life insurance versus, whole life insurance versus term.
Well, anything like financial or like, you know, for now, we don't, I would say we don't have anything planned for those types of programs.
But I'm asking if we can hold off, and I'd like to.
That's fine.
Get an agreement if that's possible.
Yeah, we'll hold off.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, any questions about that? Okay, moving on to unfinished business.
So, we thought we were finished with the gutters, but, well, so when we, you voted to do bronze, but then apparently at that time, it also was not available. And I look, I, you know, I guess there is, there is a shortage of colors because there's still an aluminum issue with supply and whatever. So, but now I did speak to Charlie again earlier, and he said that it's possible it's back on the table. But in, just in case we want to get some other colors, I feel like maybe we should kind of rank them and like if they don't have this, go to this one and do a few of them, so.
Oh, okay.
So, I think the top choice, I would still say is bronze, so we can just double check again, see that it's possible that maybe that is available. So, I think I'll put that down as number one.
When he walks in.
What's my number one?
Bronze, that was the one that we liked. So, we're going to, yeah, hopefully that is still.
So, it may still be.
Maybe, they said that maybe one supplier did have it, so.
Okay.
But he wasn't sure, he was going to double check. The second color I thought maybe we should try is that musket brown. So, this is the bronze here.
Yeah.
This was musket brown, it's pretty similar, it's a little lighter, but I think that would still look good. So, we could put that as number two. Then I think green is definitely not available, that seems across the board. But then there was, the other two were, well, there's black, which, I mean, the green on the building is pretty dark, so that was a possibility. And then there was one other one was, there was a little bit of a lighter brown, I think, royal brown. So, I don't know if anybody had a preference between, because all the other colors are a lot lighter.
Royal would go better with green than the black.
Yeah, I don't like the black.
I think the black is too harsh.
Okay, so then we'll try.
Stick out more, I think.
Okay, so then royal, and I think the browns were available. So, we'll try for bronze, if we can't get that, we'll do musket brown, and then if we can't get that, we'll do royal brown.
Right.
Okay. So, does anybody want to approve?
If we can't do that, we'll get Coca-Cola.
I know.
We got a motion that.
Yes, if you make a motion to go those colors.
Make a motion that go in that order of bronze, musket brown, and royal brown.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
All right. Status of the HVAC. So, I checked with Lisa about where that is at. So, well, first, the generator. So, we had said before that that is on hold because it was, the ARPA money was not able to be used for that. So, that is still on hold, and that's kind of where things stand with that. They're going to, I guess, try to see if there's other funding options.
What, I'm sorry, what, what money was on hold?
It's ARPA.
Oh, okay.
The fund's unavailable because the generator's on hold.
Yeah.
And I think that's unacceptable from the town because we're advertised as a heating cooling center. If we lose power.
Right, we wouldn't have.
We can't help people.
Yeah.
Did Lisa give any indication of a timeframe, how long it might be on hold, or can you?
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think because the town, we've talked before, that financially is pretty dire straits right now, so it's not looking good for getting a lot of these projects. I mean, I think a lot of the capital improvement projects have been taken off the warrant, there's, they're not really doing almost any of them because there's just no money. So, and that kind of leads us to HVAC. So, she said that that is also off the table because the, for the replacement, because with the preventative maintenance, they, so the company that we had, it turned, well, the company we've been using before, it seemed like we were getting substandard service. And they, there was a lot of issues that were noticed that they weren't, didn't bring to our attention, they hadn't fixed things properly. There's other things which maybe date back from years ago. We've, there's, I guess, there's some wiring in the kind of the staff area is one of the areas that was particularly troublesome HVAC wise, and apparently some of the dampers back there are not wired or not wired properly. So, so they said this new company, which deals with a couple of other buildings in town, they said with preventive maintenance, you should be able to get another three to eight years out of the HVAC systems in the building. So, that is kind of where the town wants to go instead of replacing. So, Charlie had contacted them about getting a contract in place. They'd come back with a number which was pretty high, I think it was close to like $10,000 a year. So, and I said, that's not going to work, it's not in our budget. He had them revise it, and it was still $7,200. So, I spoke to Lisa and said, you know, that's still not going to work, you know, if we're not going to replace HVAC, we have to have a maintenance plan in place, like what is, what are the options? So, she said that there's also a public buildings maintenance line that the town has. So, if we paid a portion of this and then they paid the other portion out of that money, that that is doable. So, I, and then also, we are saving money also with having Jude full time custodian, we're not, you know, we don't need as much, we're not doing as much big projects, he's able to handle a lot of stuff instead. And with Charlie and facilities, so.
What did we say we'd do for a service contract at the last meeting? I don't.
I think he was going to look into it.
Oh, okay. So, I didn't, oh.
In the minutes.
Yeah, we approved up to $6,000 in repairs and the contract.
Yeah, I mean. No, that was, that was for repairs and the maintenance that they did in preparation for a contract.
Okay.
So, because that was, yeah, that was to fix all the issues. So, this would be, so I'm going to suggest if we did like a 50/50 split, so we would do 36/12 for the happy year, and then they would do the other 36/12.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think that's reasonable, given our budget, that we could handle that, absorb that cost, so. And then they have a whole list of all the things that they would do, which I think looked pretty good.
Okay, so, we're in the new fiscal year, so basically it's another 365 days minus a few days. So, can somebody keep kind of a note like, okay, the temperature's already dropped down to 70, and we are going to be very warm, very hot the next few days, so air conditioners are working harder, but take note, you know.
Well, we have noted, the stuff they've already done, you've definitely noticed an improvement.
Okay, but I want you, if there's a problem, an issue, kind of do a log.
Yeah.
Because especially when it comes winter time.
Right.
I mean, there were days I came in here last year, people were freezing. And if it's too cold, we might have to close.
Yeah.
And that's because our system isn't.
Right.
Isn't working enough. I don't know when the senior center is closed from Friday to Monday, do they adjust the thermostats in here or anything?
I don't know how they handle that system.
Because I don't know if that would help the library.
Well, it is, they're separate units, so.
Oh, okay, so it's not going to help. All right. Yeah, I would make note on a calendar or wherever, if it's an unusual circumstances and you have to call in for maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
Because.
No, it's good if it's right, a maintenance log.
Five to eight years, it's not going to, the way it's been going, and yes, they have made improvements, and you can feel the coolness, okay? And maybe, you know, we finally lucked out with the right company, but I'm really very disappointed, and I'm going to let the select board know that. And we, we all understand finances, we all live on budgets and all that kind of stuff. But here we are, the library at the bottom again, and it's not acceptable. I'm going to call Frank on the capital improvement committee. Yes, Linda?
We were told previously that due to the age of existing HVAC system, it would be an issue to get parts, we were told that by the state when they did the last inspection of the previous HVAC.
Well, they mentioned, yeah, they mentioned during the age, I think it was in that, that air quality report.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe you can pull from, some information from that to use.
Yeah, I can double check, yeah.
To the town.
Sure. I mean, they, when this company came in, they didn't seem to have any trouble though doing repairs, so.
Diane?
Can I just expand on what you're suggesting with the temperatures?
Sure.
Is that maybe a nice little Excel spreadsheet is created with different tabs of things that go wrong, whether it's something with the sprinkler system, something with the heating and air conditioning, something with the plumbing, or the septic, the electric, the phones, things like, I know you have the new phones, but if, you know, we kind of create a tab for the various times you've got to go out.
Right.
To bring somebody in. I think that through these meetings, we handle them one off, but we're losing track of the historical of how often you've had to call out to bring somebody in.
Exactly.
Either an emergency basis or a, if we don't do this soon, it's going to be an emergency basis.
Right, yeah, I agree. And I also think that we need all that ammunition to go to the select board, because when you think about it, just in the past 10 years, we've spent so much money on repair work that, first of all, just take the roof, you know, we've been repairing it since the beginning because they go with the cheapest, not quality work, the cheapest. And, you know, Tony and I had, and I had a long talk about that, and, you know, he agrees, you have to check the companies out, see what their quality is, but this town, and I know it goes on everywhere, doesn't make it right because it goes on everywhere. But at least we would have ammunition to say, we just spent $100,000 over the past 10 years on all these different repairs where we could have had a new HVAC system and generator.
And I don't know if, I'm not looking to make more work, but if you have, you know, like a folder of, this is, you know, this is with plumbing, this is with electrical, this is with HVAC, whatever, that if somebody could at least start with from here on, and then on a quiet day, start working back by adding in previous dates so that we start to see the history and just have the documentation so that.
Right.
It's something that when you have to bring something to us, you can also bring the documentation.
Well, I do already have an Excel sheet where I track all the expenses, so, and it, like I do, like, you know, so all the building expenses are, you know, I have.
But I'm saying just.
Yeah.
The issues.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And that can be, you know, copied over to another.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So, did you want to approve the?
50/50 split?
Yeah.
50/50 split.
All right, I'll make a motion to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, thank you.
All right, new business. So, I don't have the revised contract, I mean, the revised security camera policy yet. So, what's happening is because, well, we were going to have town council look at it again because they want, thinking of adding in a portion about, yeah, using it for discipline, and that had to go before the union. So, you know, we, obviously, you adopted our policy for us without that, but they were going to look, continue to look into that. So, they've changed tactics a little bit because other town buildings have cameras as well. So, they're actually going to expand the policy and revise it to be townwide. They actually, they did just show me a draft the other day. It's basically our policy with library replacement with town, and then a few things added in here or there. So, once that's, and then it has to go before the union, so once that, once that is finalized, I'll bring that to you, but I just want you to know that's what they're working on, so. But yeah, I think it'd be a simple, simple update.
What do you mean by they use it for discipline?
Like an employee discipline, like if there was something going on, you need to look back at it, you know.
Oh, I see, yes.
But the union obviously has concerns about that, so.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I will, hopefully they'll have something by the August meeting. Next, so for, we have the grant money from the Mass Cultural Council, we're starting to look into using it. So, we've looked into, we really like to kind of revamp the children's room as much as we can, I know it's such a small space, but what we've thought of is purchasing like little bookcases and like storage cubby things that can fit in between the windows.
Nice.
So, you know, they're pretty small, they can fit in through a cup, you know, a few of the windows, and then they have either just shelving for some more, like we need more areas for toddler books, and then also, some of them come with bins, and so you can buy like all different like fun things, like, because Jeff's actually had mentioned this at Plymouth, you know, obviously she's, you know, there, from there, and she said that the Plymouth library has a whole bunch of different things like that, like manipulatives and all this kind of stuff.
That's great.
So, we found a great, a bunch of great stuff on Lakeshore, and then a couple of things on Amazon, so. So, I was hoping you could approve up to $5,000 to purchase those. And then also, down the line a little bit, maybe another few months, once, if we can purchase that, to kind of get maybe into a new tables and new chairs, because they're kind of looking a little, you know, worn, and maybe getting something that's more adaptable so that we can, you know, make it bigger or smaller if we need to more easily than what we have now, so.
Okay, so.
All for the children's room?
Yes, for the children's room, yeah.
How much money do we have?
So, the whole grant is just over $42,000.
Right, okay.
So, if we use up to 5,000, we for now to.
Certainly.
To do the bookcases and film up.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to spend up to $5,000 to, on various items to improve and update the children's room.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Can't wait to see it.
All right.
All right, moving on, library building project. So, I just wanted to give you an update, had quite a few things happen since our last meeting. So, as you know, well, we finished the input gathering portion of the strategic planning process. So, we had focus groups, the flip charts, the middle school questionnaire, the survey, which had about 200 responses. We had a planning committee meeting on July 17th. So, Ruth and I had looked at the input and come up with some kind of key points, and then we had the, we didn't show that to the committee, we had them separately at the meeting, you know, tell us what they pulled from, from the input that they looked at. And then we kind of put it all together, and Ruth is going to be working on, Ruth and I are going to be working on the actual draft of the strategic plan. We're hoping to have that for the August meeting, a draft to provide, present to the board, and then for approval in September, and then be submitted to the MBLC in October. So, that's the timeline. And then after that, we'll start on more focusing on the library building program portion.
She's so focused.
So, yeah, she's, yeah, she's been great. Yeah, she's very on top of stuff.
Yeah, she really is.
So, that's kind of where we're at with that.
I did get positive feedback on her, from someone who was at one of the focus groups, just to share it, yeah.
Oh, nice, excellent.
And then with the grant application, so I did, I met with Lisa, actually, I've had a meeting with Lisa earlier today, and then also a few weeks ago with Tony as well at the time. As you know, I don't think I heard Tony's leaving, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But they are hiring somebody and they hope to have somebody in place soon, so we'll see how, you know, how that looks out. But so for the grant, I've already, I think I told you, I've already started filling in some of the simple, you know, simple data that we need to put in. Once I finish the state aid report, I'll put in those statistics, there, part of that is required. The $150,000 vote, that's going to be in May. So, at my meeting this morning with Lisa, we'd mentioned that, you know, with the town being in such dire straits financially, like where, you know, would they be willing to approve something like that in May? So, I see two options. One is that we use foundation money instead of town money. The other option, which actually Lisa mentioned, if we're not doing the replacement for the HVAC, the HVAC, we have the 200,000 that was designated for that, so she said that it's possible that that could be repurposed for the $150,000 instead. So, those are kind of the options of.
I'm really concerned about the HVAC. It's been here for, I know work has been done and all that, and yes, right now it's very comfortable, but, I mean, I'm not an expert in the field by any means. I'm just really, I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, you know? This is the time when you, I am, how do you feel?
The hundred and fifty would go towards what, again?
So it's, the grant requires that, that the town vote to, um, appropriate local funding of a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the planning and design fees of the grant process. And that would have to be done in May, so, I guess the concern is that if the town, I mean, if they're, like, even thinking of an override, is the town gonna vote a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that?
They are planning for an override, but.
So if we have the HVAC money, or if we try to use foundation money, that those might be easier?
So if we used.
More palatable to.
The HVAC, and we have a emergency, or, where's that money coming?
Well, it depends, I mean, emergency, if, if they aren't able to repair it, um, and they have to do some replacement, you know, I, I guess that would, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the town would do in that case, but.
Then we'd have to go to the, the emergency wallet.
Yeah.
I personally don't think the foundation should put the money up. Um, without any financial commitment from the town, um, foundation's been working since two thousand six to build up the, um, funds that we have.
Well, you wouldn't have to actually give the money, by the way, you'd only give the money if you got the grant, and you started the design work, so it would be for, like, you don't have to give the money ahead of time, it would be, but you'd have to kind of, um, do they have to vote that it would be able to be spent if you did get the grant?
You'd get the grant from the state.
Yes.
But still, you have no guarantee that the town's gonna approve the money necessary for the building project.
Well, so I guess, so you, are you saying you wanted all the money to be just for the construction phase? Like, once we know, is that what?
I would prefer that, once we have a commitment from the town, who've been doing the design and all this, and, um, the town hasn't had to spend a penny yet. Um, we've gotten forty thousand dollars from the economic development, gonna be using some trust funds, and we're already committing a lot of money, and the town hasn't put forth a penny.
We could.
I mean, my only concern is would, if the town is in such bad, you know, financially, would, I, I mean, if people vote this down, the grant, our grant ends, you know, moving forward with the grant at all. I guess that would be my only concern, that.
What is the timeline, I think is what I'm trying to understand.
So they would vote in May to, um, I, I forget what the exact wording is, they have to approve, um, the expenditure of, um, to approve, like, um, construction money from the state if we get the grant, and they have to approve.
Yes.
Yes, and they have to approve that hundred fifty thousand dollars will be, you, will be appropriated from somewhere for that purpose, once we get the grant and move forward with planning and design.
And what is the deadline for the grant?
Um, so, uh, May thirty-first, next year.
So if the town.
So and then we would know next October if we got the grant. So, but you don't have, that's to say, you don't have to pay the hundred fifty thousand until, like, probably.
Right, but it's not like we can't, it's not like going to the town, and whether or not is there a yay or a nay, or even a compromise on the town meeting floor, and have enough time that if it's, say, a compromise, a partial funding, that then the foundation have time to then meet and vote before your deadline for the grant.
We could call an emergency meeting.
I don't know if the words are coming out clearly.
We could call an emergency meeting, but.
You following me?
Yes, if this fails, and we're not using our money, we can't do anything.
Right.
And I think if this fails, this is, part of it is, it's, I, I, I do agree with Linda in that we need to get some citizen buy-in, not town. Citizen buy-in.
Exactly, no, I agree.
And, because if we don't have that from the beginning.
Right.
It's not gonna come.
Right, and from our planning committee meetings, a big thing is community center will be what the town will buy into.
Is there a chance for a compromise?
Well, it.
And not the compromise being, you know, you, you, the foundation pay upfront, but a compromise where, just like with the, the, the contract for the HVAC, that, you know, let's, let's be in hapsies here.
I don't think the foundation is necessarily in a good position to be asking, but I believe, um, Josh Cutler put up quite a bit of money from the state funds for the Pembroke Community Center. In multiple years in a row, he gave, um, tens of thousand dollars to the Pembroke Public Library. Would he be someone that we could talk to?
And that town just took care of the Lydia Drake, they had mildew, a whole bunch of stuff going on, and as they were doing this work, then they found other work, they had a lot of.
And they're building the community center.
Yes.
That's what I was saying, Josh got over a hundred thousand dollars to.
See, I didn't even envision a community center that large, but they're a much larger town as well. But, you know, the Lydia Drake is just this tiny little library, it's open again, but basically, the whole thing's been revamped, and it's just run by volunteers. Um, so the town took care of that.
But we're talking for May town meeting?
Um, yeah, like I said, the money doesn't have to be, wouldn't be spent until, like I said, you'd, you'd know if you got the grant in October, and then you would start the work, so it wouldn't be till, like, probably early twenty twenty-five, that you'd actually be spending the hundred fifty thousand.
Alright, I'm confused, 'cause we're in July and we're talking May.
Yeah, so May, next May, they, the town needs to approve to expend, to appropriate a hundred fifty thousand dollars locally, and to expend grant funds if we get the grant, which we'll know that later that October.
You don't know for another six months.
And then you would obviously start the planning and design work, where the money would actually be spent, wouldn't be till, like, probably January twenty twenty-five.
I think we need to know what the citizens think.
Yeah, I agree. John, you wanted to say something?
I just wondered if, if, uh, committing ahead of time, some portion of funds from the foundation would have boost the town's.
Buying.
Buying.
That's what I'm saying, you know, is there, is there a compromise, but if, if the town is in such financial situation?
But I agree with Linda that, that it shouldn't be, it should not be the foundation's role to, to fully fund that hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Great.
A portion of it.
Possibly.
Maybe. You know, and, and I was thinking maybe twenty-five or thirty thousand to convince the town that, that the trustees and the foundation are backing this a hundred percent. But the, the foundation wants the money that we have to go into the actual building of the new library, as opposed to, as opposed to funding the research into what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah, and we have time to figure this out, but just, um, that's, you know, that's kind of the discussions that I'd had with Lisa, that, and, again, you know, she said by then we'll know, um, you know, with the HVAC maybe money, and then also they'll know how much free cash they have, so that's, you know.
Is there someone, and who would it be, that could contact Josh Cutler about some state money either for the HVAC on this hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah, I can see what.
Okay, all I can do is say no. He's been very generous with local funding.
Especially he's always one that's talking about Pembroke Library, being their heating and cooling center, I mean, they even have cots, and things like that, I believe, so.
Um, how about?
See him in Pembroke?
The, um.
Duxbury.
Duxbury, yeah.
The person who covers, covers precinct one, I can't even think of his name.
Oh, yeah.
From Hanover, he's done nothing so far.
Uh, Michael.
Yeah, he are.
Oh, the one that, that replaced was Brady?
No.
No, he's a senator.
They redid the district because of the population.
Okay.
So now we're part of Hanover and Rockland.
Rep for Hanover, was it?
In Rockland.
Yeah, I can't think of his name.
No, neither can I.
In Senator Brady, I suppose, could be contacted, he's never really come through for us before, maybe it's time.
Um, do you want me to call Senator Brady?
Yeah, if you want.
'Cause I've had a lot of conversations with him.
Yeah.
Give a pen, my pen has died.
Um.
David DeCoast. No, I don't.
What'd you say, David?
Thanks.
I think David might be his first name.
David DeCoast?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Alright. Um, we also discussed, um, so there's other portions of the grant, um, steps that needed to be done. Obviously, Ruth is gonna be doing the building program, um, there's the, um, like, some statement of need, or some questions related to statements of need, I'll be working on those. Um, the, the select board is gonna be hiring a new, um, new person, who Lisa said could possibly start working on some of the policies that we need, financial policies that the town doesn't currently have. Um, there's some fu- funding scenarios, which I guess is, John Madden is, um, they're working with, I don't, I think he's a consultant, maybe, um, that he can maybe take a look at that. Um, and then, um, there's a management plan for, if we're gonna have a shared building with the senior center, so, um, I'm gonna put together a rough, like, outline of that, um, and for legal counsel to eventually review, so. Um, so, you know, we're, we're kind of trying to get all the pieces together and, um, move forward with that, so I think we're in pretty good shape at this point. Um, so also, as part of the grant, we, um, were required to submit, um, library core values, and we've never, we've never had those before, so, um, Ruth, Julie, and I kind of worked together, um, developing some, which I sent to you. Um, so, and it's just a drafted, you know, there's no, we can do this over the next few months if you wanna stretch it out, there's no huge rush on this, but, um, these are some of the points that we had come up with. You know, we looked at some, what other libraries had, what are, um, some of the input that we got from all the focus groups and survey, and, um, to kind of put this together. And I don't know if anybody had any thoughts or suggestions, um, or if you wanted to, you know, look at it this month and then vote on it next month, or?
We just get the headings.
Um, so those were just some, we kind, you kind of think about kind of what areas you really wanna focus on, like, what are your priorities, and then, um, within that, you kind of just do a little explanation of what, um, you know, so these are some of the points, you know, obviously service excellence, um, intellectual freedom, um, you know, diversity, innovation, literacy and learning, and then community and collaboration. So those are all kind of the main things that were, um, really, as it says, core values of the library.
These seem to go across what you see with other libraries.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, some other libraries had different variations, they added a few things, or, you know, switched things around, took other things out, and, um, but these were kind of the main, I felt, the main key themes.
I like them.
Yeah, I, I think they're very good.
Very clear.
Alright, um, can we wait till next month to vote, when remotely everyone will be here?
Okay, yeah.
In case anybody has a thought between now and then?
Yep.
Okay.
Is, uh, I don't know, it's indirect, like, um, like, collection and all, you don't really, um, in materials per se, um, you address equal access to library materials, but, um, you don't possibly say you offer a wide variety of highly, um, reviewed library materials, and, I don't know, something about the materials per se.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know, well, I can see what, I don't know, uh, other libraries, if that would be like, uh, core value, if it would kind of fit under some of these other ones, but I can take.
I don't know, it was just a thought.
Um, it's like something more related to collection.
Yeah, and not necessarily just print.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause it kind of could fit under to, like, literacy and learning, but, um, that we have, obviously our materials.
But it says.
Help us focus to do that.
You inspire to foster, but you never really directly address it, it seems.
Well, these are supposed to be kind of high, higher level, like, not, like, they're really detailed, like, we're gonna have this.
We do have a collection policy, so.
Right, yeah.
And I did think of that when I was saying it, so I was just wondering.
But I can just take another look and see what.
I think these are more, like, our statement for service excellence, and statement for each thing, and then you can expand on, yes.
And service excellence.
It should be simple, just like, um, a mission statement.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll take a quick look and see if this.
I suppose you strive to support community needs, I guess that could be interpreted as collection and resources, I don't know.
Yeah, we can take another look, um, for next.
I don't feel strongly, I just wondered.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, key, uh, draft or key priorities, I don't actually have a draft, but, um, 'cause we are still working on that, but, um, just some of the things I'd like to go over that we, um, got from the, um, the input, and kind of summary of what we talked about at our strategic planning meeting. So, some of the key points that came out that, um, were identified, which kind of relate to the, what we just talked about, but, um, some of the key words were like, community, coordination, access, communication, um, inclusive, welcoming, convenient, um, arts and culture, more than books, outreach, outdoor spaces, um, information sharing, uh, gathering for the community, um, socializing, a place for learning, um, yes, basic socials, make, um, some of the things, like, were, like, making the community attractive, um, and affordable for older and young, obviously that's more kind of, um, what people wanted to see at Hanson, library can necessarily do much about some of the things, but, um, you know, inclusive in terms of, um, like, for collections, like, wide variety of materials, different things for different ages, um, in addition to things like ADA compliance, and, um, welcoming to people of different, um, you know, different walks of life. Um, so these were kind of all the themes and key points that came out of the meeting that we had, and the, um, input that we gathered. Um, and one of the important things was, um, as I mentioned, outreach, so kind of meeting users where they are, getting out, the library out into the community. So these are the things that Ruth and I are gonna be using to do the strategic plan, to come up with the, um, you know, the key, um, the key themes, and the, uh, the wording that we need for, um, the portion of the strategic plan that we're, we're doing now. Um, it was, I don't know, did you wanna add anything that you?
I was just gonna say that community is, is, you know, I'd say ninety-five percent of the people are concerned about commu- community. Um, and, I mean, I peruse the, um, Hanson sites on Facebook, and people are looking for community. The other thing we, you know, we were talking among ourselves, saying, the commu- the communication really has to be, you know, vamped up, it's poor, you know?
Well, I think it's an issue, I mean, it's an issue for all libraries, yeah.
But I think in, in, but, even at the town, they're talking about, at the select board, they're talking about the strategic planning that we really need to focus, I mean, they're working on, you know, they have a company helping this year, and the, the, um, Facebook page has been great popping up, I've seen stuff from the library as well as other, but it's, again, it's what people choose to look at, they, you know? So it's almost with us, we can, you know, show what's coming up. We can have it posted somewhere, we can get all that information, so like, we're another place that you can find that information, you don't have to go to town hall, if you don't use social media, but then some departments.
People aren't, that aren't on Facebook or whatever, social media.
Right, yeah.
Trying to get out, to go to places where there are people, the people are going.
Right, and, and some groups don't use social media, some committees. So, the committee that I go to that aren't, I'm really trying to encourage them to, because it's another avenue, so, um, that people know what they're doing. Yeah, so, and you have to, and that's what's going on, the strategic planning for the town, is we all agree, we're gonna work, the departments are gonna work together, and, you know, but it takes time.
Yeah, I think in one of the things, you know, some of the stuff that people said, oh, I wish the library did this or had this, and a lot of it we do, and we have.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just a matter of that the people aren't aware, but, but again, how do you, the people that, you know, But again, how do you, the people that, you know, they don't, maybe they don't, they're on social media, they don't, they throw their mail in the trash, they don't, you know, they don't go to town meeting, they, like, how do you get those people to be aware of what's going on?
Yeah, a lot of people don't get the newspaper anymore.
Yeah, they don't read the newspaper, they don't.
You know, I get the Whitman Hanson Express, but I don't know how many people, households in town, so I'm sure there are a lot that don't. So. So.
So, yeah, I think it was a very productive meeting.
Oh, yes, the meeting was excellent, so.
About how many responses, how many did you get?
Two hundred. Yeah, so it was pretty good.
Yeah.
How many were online, do you know?
Uh, most of them, I think there was only about like ten that were paper, and the rest were all online, yeah.
That's excellent.
That was a coffee thing, yeah.
I wondered.
Yeah, no, I asked her, and she said it's fine being plugged in, it's not, like, because one time we unplugged it, thinking it was gonna, and she said, no, that's not an issue, so. I don't know. Um, all right, uh, any other questions? So, um, status of the RFP, so Lisa, I mean, Teresa and I met this morning with Lauren from the MBLCA, she's one of the building specialists, and to go over, because I think if you remember, our RFP was, um, you know, we, we weren't able to do certain things based on, it would disqualify us from the grant, so we want to kind of steer our RFP more to being a, a conditions assessment, which is required for if we're gonna consider a shared building, um, or renovation of our building. So, um, she helped us take out some of the language, and Teresa had done that, and then we sent it to Lauren again, and there was a couple of the points she wanted to adjust, so we got that done, I'm just gonna go through it again and make a few points, you know, changes additionally that Lauren had suggested, and then um, we should be ready to get it out in early August, um, to, to get that, you know, architect in to do the assessment, so.
What is the date again they needed?
Uh, this is due till May, to the application deadline, so.
And we'll get it out in August?
Yes, we'll get it in August, yeah, I mean, it might be like three to six months' process for them to do it, so. Yes, we want to get it out there to, um, to get going on that, so we should be good with that. Um, and that's all I had for building, so.
What will be the payment schedule for that, do you know, or would be paid monthly, similar to Ruth?
I don't, I don't remember if we've had that in the RFP, I think we, we kept it at the maximum of fifty thousand, um, although it's probably gonna be less than that, um, since we, we're not doing all that other work, um, that we had thought. Um, I don't know if we had a payment schedule listed, or if we just said whatever we should decide. Um, but I mean, we could, we could probably, you know, do like whatever we, if we want to do monthly, we could probably do something like that. Would you, that's a problem.
I'm thinking back of how it reads, and I don't know.
Yeah, I forget, I'll double check and see what.
Or maybe with the.
Maybe, I'm not sure if we got into that in the RFP, though, that might be something you'd figure out probably afterward, once you have somebody there.
Right, and then maybe at the August twenty-second meeting, we could each have a copy of the RFP that when it's all completed, then you've sent out.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll send you a copy once we have it finalized, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. That was all I had, was there any foundation? Well, I mentioned earlier that trivia was a success, but if you want to add anything, I don't know.
I think it was a success, but then again, it's a credit to our patrons that come by and support us.
My family thought it was a smashing success.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Smarties.
Even if you can't even know their names. How many, how many emails did that take? Did I get it right? Uh, I'm still working with Joe Harrington, I'm trying to get all the paperwork straight. The last packet I sent was incomplete, so. And I've had a very busy couple weeks, but I will get on to it. Hopefully get it done to his satisfaction this week.
Did he accept parts of it, or does it?
He wants it all at once.
All at once, and, yeah. How much has to be redone, do you know?
I gotta get, uh, the, the, uh, document that has the authorized signatures. I still have to get, I have to get that notarized to do it, because because I did not list my name in the first part, and when I did, I printed it out, and that was separately scanned from the original document, so he wants it as mine, one complete document, so I'll be around sometime this week after I get it notarized.
Now, you can just go to the bank here, Northeast, and then notarize it. They should.
Right. You did that before, right?
Are you a notary?
No.
No, I have a question.
I have a friend. Um, this was the clipboard that we had at trivia night for volunteer sign-ups.
Yep.
Is it something that we could, there was a name, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Teresa's gonna reach out to them.
Right.
Is it something that we could have here in the library, up on, you know, it doesn't have to be in the way, but just.
No, with the foundation stuff on top, yeah.
Yeah. No, that was just before Teresa wrote her fantastic little elevator speech, I can take her elevator speech and fit it down to size, but if you guys agree with whatever it says for now, then Cameron can put it up there.
Yeah, I read it, I thought it was fine.
You know, the big, the thing I felt was important to say is that, you know, there is no commitment to putting your name on this piece of paper, you're not, you know, signing on the dotted line to be.
Oh, I don't know, the signature goes on there, we lucky president.
If it were on like an eight and a half, five eleven, would maybe the foundation.
With the foundation, no, that's why, it's just, that's what I have for now, that we had a trivia night, but I wanted to get a feel.
Application applications, still up there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, now I just didn't know what you had in mind, it might catch their eye with the logo.
Yeah, no, I was gonna make it bigger with using, possibly, you, you know, taking Teresa's elevator speech, taking out the, the words about trivia night.
Right.
And, um, you know, making it that way, having the logo, and having it be a little more than a little four by six sign.
Anyone else have anything?
Do you want some updates, financial and that, uh? Either trivia or the consultant invitations, or not?
Um, do you want updates for trivia and consultant?
Financial.
Yeah, that's.
That's okay, yeah. Anything else for foundation? Okay, the date of our next meeting is Tuesday, August twenty-second.
I'll stay away.
Okay, two thousand twenty-three at six forty-five.
Because we could move it to the twenty-ninth unless, is that? Because I know sometimes vacations, I don't know if that's people, or the twenty.
It doesn't matter to me, I don't think I'm doing anything.
Would that matter to anyone?
I'm kinda like it the twenty-second, I like it the first day of school, it's the thirtieth, so. I like to think of.
Pam has to get ready for the first day, the kids are fine. Back in the mode.
She has to be in bed early.
I know, I've been sleeping until seven, ooh.
What did I have? It's something on the first week of September. It's not in my calendar.
Um, so we're gonna go with August twenty-second and, or.
See what Teresa's.
Yeah, you can get that, Lisa. Well, she has the same thing, she has kids still in school.
Well, she's got even more than I do going back, so.
Right, it might be, okay, so I'll make a motion to, watch the button on the back. Um, adjourn the meeting at seven forty-seven P M. Sunday second, all in favor, unanimous, we're going home.